My pledge of allegiance to the fighting in the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Teresa, roll call please.
Hey, Mayor Jones.
Here.
Brenneman.
Here.
Keel.
Here.
O'Hara.
Here.
Woslinger.
Here.
Mattson.
Here.
And Jas.
Yes. Do we have an addition or a motion to approve the agenda?
One more.
We've got two, sorry. Got a motion, a second, any discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Do we have a motion or any discussion on the minutes from the 10:04 meeting?
Motion approved.
Any discussion? Not? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Bills. Motion to approve the bills. I would make a motion to approve those. Any discussion? I look through, I don't think I see anything that can question on, anything, any questions? Not? We'll vote. O'Hara.
Yes.
Jas.
Yes.
Keel.
Yes.
Brenneman.
Yes.
Mattson.
Yes.
Woslinger.
Yes.
Alright, public comment, anybody here that has anything to talk about, not on the agenda? Yes, sir.
Addressed with Ralph Kimmich.
Get up to the state, your name.
Hello, Adam Jorgensen, as your behalf of Unity Road, my business partner, VJ Olson, chose to not be here, feel a little under the weather, rather be safe and silent. But I'm here simply to thank the city, we are very close to celebrating our 90-day anniversary since open July 27th was the day that we made history in Hartford, opening the first state-licensed medical marijuana dispensary. At that time, there was 1,711 registered medical marijuana patients. Every single Monday, the South Dakota side is updated with a current card count or a current patient count. We are now at 3,930, I'm confident with the weeks of recent growth being between 200 and 400 weekly. Next week will be, a big week, we'll cross 4,000 certified medical patients, but the primary reason I'm here is not to educate on card count, sorry. Thank all of you, we really do appreciate the support the city has provided, we're working very hard to make sure that this entity, as we committed in the planning phases, in reality, is proving to be something that Hartford can view as a point of pride. We're working very hard, but this is not a blemish on the city, both from an external appearance, to an internal appearance, to way down to Google reviews from customers speaking to experience of the facility and the staff inside. With Measure 27 coming up, of course, voting on the recreational adult use of marijuana, of course, we are supporting and anticipating passage of Measure 27. I'd like to extend an invitation to anybody that has not yet been to the store, or if you've been there already, if either of you have questions, if either of you would like to see what this looks like in reality, you don't have to have a medical card to enter my facility. As long as you are 18 years old or older, I would love to provide an opportunity to help educate the public, regardless of your status. If you oppose and or support, we would love the opportunity, as we have been, we've been named pioneers, we've been named trailblazers, we've been called whatever synonyms we want to help the cause. Again, whether you oppose, whether you support, our doors are open, and I'd like to extend that welcome to the community. If you are feeling any calls from concerned and or supportive citizens, residents of Hartford, please know that our doors are open. We want to do our best to represent the city, and of course, represent this new industry in South Dakota. Thank you, that's all.
Thank you. Alright, anyone else? If not, close to 7:05, by talks law we will be. Under hearings, Zardnitz's resolution, 7:05 public hearing for Resolution 2022-12, annexation petition submitted by Picket Fence Investments LLC for parcel 97250. Information's in your packet. Teresa, anything to add?
No, basically, like you said, the city received an annexation petition for this parcel, it is located right south of the Maple Pass Edition, right east of town, it is between Highway 38 and that addition. There's a mapping in your packet that is shown in blue. This is a parcel that they're going to annex, it does provide a good connection for annexation, because south of the highway is all annexing, the city are ready. It did go before the Planning and Zoning Board at their meeting last week, and it was unanimously approved, at that point, they are recommending approval by the council.
Alright, thank you. Any action from the council?
I would make a motion to approve the addition. That's submitted.
Any discussion? If not, we'll vote. Woslinger. Yes. Mattson.
Yes.
Brenneman.
Yes.
Keel.
Yes.
Jas.
Yes.
Thank you. Too fast. Can we reset the clock?
You get a four-minute speech now.
No, I'm not going to get no four-minute speech. You maybe weren't here when we were talking about the county commission.
I heard it was four minutes.
Are you here on behalf of the fire department?
I am.
Okay, let's jump down and take care of the fire department report.
Good evening, Connor Borlins versus Assistant Resilient Chief Matthew Alstott, I work tonight, so I hear you said. In the month of September, Fire Department responded to 33 calls for service, 16 of which were inside city limits. Last night, we had our DMS training for the month, we reviewed social healthcare needs and pain management. And next week, we're doing our fire training, we're going to be done at Oakley Auto Salvage, reviewing auto electrification. Couple events over the last month, last week, we recognized Fire prevention week, went into West Central, and did some presentations for the first, second, and seventh graders. And then last month, we officially put our ALS report call in the books and started with that, so. Any questions from you at all?
I noticed you were at the daycares, were you doing some daycare?
Yeah, we did some daycares, and yeah, we tried to get to the daycares, or sometimes they'd come down with fire station and do a tour and talk to them about stop, drop, and roll, and if they have a meeting place inside or outside their house, and not to go back in for anything if their house is on fire, you know.
That's good, that's good. Any questions for the fire department? Fortunately, you haven't had anything happen with all this wind in the.
Yeah, we've been, we've been pretty fortunate so far, we did have grass fires the other day, had some high winds, but fortunately, it was reported early, and we got enough help there early, so we put this out to it before anything gets too out of control, so.
Typically, we have something go anywhere, and a combine catches on fire or something.
Yeah, fingers crossed, either we get some rain here, or at least the winds will die down a little bit, so.
Alright, we appreciate everything you guys do.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. Amy, you want to start? Chamber of Economic Development Director, and Amy, you're up.
Thank you, all my information's in the packet, I just want to point out a few things, we have a ribbon cutting tomorrow at 4:30 for Paper Bolt right downtown here. We also have the city's Dock Park ribbon cutting on Friday at 4:30 as well. With that being said, chamber stuff is in there, HADF, we had a great visit from Senator Dean last week, we toured the community, stopped at Central State's outside, did an inside tour of Vanilla Bean Kings, and then stopped to see the senior citizens, there's a handful there, showed them our library. I think Mayor Arden Jones had more fun than the senator, perhaps. He was shaking hands with everyone along with him, and then we had a great conversation to follow up the tour, with Senator Dean for probably about 30 minutes, questions and answers, so it was very nicely done, I guess. Great response from those that attended, and then today, spent quite a bit of time in Sioux Falls at county commission, and looking forward to more excitement for economic development. Any questions?
I see no HADF meeting tomorrow morning, and tomorrow night, you're having your.
Strategic planning session, correct.
I don't know if you do it every month or every week, every, yeah, I guess it would be every month, but having committee members' names there is helpful, thank you.
Alright, any questions for Amy? If not, I believe I just hit 7:10, let's click back up to our next resolution. This is the 7:10 public hearing, first reading, ordered at 7:36 to rezone, application submitted by Picket Fence for parcels 97250 and 96749. Information is in your packet.
Motion approved, per three orders, 7:36.
Any discussion? If not, we'll vote. O'Hara.
Yes.
Jas.
Yes.
Keel.
Yes.
Brenneman.
Yes.
Mattson.
Yes.
Woslinger.
Yes.
Alright. Next up, Resolution 2022-13, a special assessment for 2022. A little background, it's all in the packet, there was a semi-trailer that was parked on the grass on Genie Circle, we've tried to resolve this, have not had any luck. Our recourse is to place an assessment that goes against their taxes if anything is ever done with that parcel, correct?
Correct. Basically, the parking issue was resolved, but they never paid any of their fines that were issued, so we sell those on our books, we do want to assess it against the property, and that will take a resolution from the council, and then we'll send it to the county, and if the property ever does sell, it goes against that sale.
Alright, any action from the council?
Make a motion to approve Resolution 2022-15.
12. 13. So it's 12 in my packet.
It says 12.
10.
Oh, I see the possible action, it says the wrong number on, that's my bad.
Is 13 correct?
What are you pointing to?
Oh, I'm sorry, that was in my report, that's the wrong number, so, in general, sorry.
I'm trying to come from.
My report's wrong.
Teresa's report's wrong.
Yes.
Did we get a motion, did we get a second? I'll second. Okay. Any more discussion?
So I see the copies of the violation notices, 1167, 1169, help the violators' signatures, how do we get this information in front of these, of the violators? How do we, you know, what's that process look like again?
So they get, so basically, when we get a complaint, we investigate it, our first thing is to send out a warning letter and give them a certain timeframe to correct. If they don't correct it, we send them another letter with an additional time to correct, and the first fine, and then subsequently, a third letter with time to correct and a third fine. They did correct it by the third time go around, but they never came in and paid any of these fines. These fines are just sent in with the letter, and they're sent to the official address of the fine with the county.
There's no way to verify that they received those letters, is that true? Or we're not sent a certified, correct?
No, we're not, and organs doesn't require that.
Okay.
I think actually, organs does say first-class mail.
Just first-class mail, perfect, okay.
Alright, anything else?
She has had them, because we've had, or she did get them, because we've had calls on them, so. We can bear.
Bear point, okay. Alright, anything else? Not? We'll vote. Brenneman. Yep. Mattson.
Yes.
Woslinger.
Yes.
Keel.
Yes.
Jas.
Yes.
O'Hara. Alright, that one passes. We're on to 2022-14, if that's really the right number.
My voice up. My report, yes.
Transfer funds to Munt and Sixth Street project. Information's in the packet, this is money we set aside in our general fund, plus transfers from the water fund and sewer fund, uncorrected.
This one's just to transfer out of the water.
Water fund, not out of sewer.
This is for when we added the water line on the industrial sewer project along 12th Street. Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, this has water too, water and sewer. Well, you got, you're off your game after.
I am off my game.
That just did, that did, just down the end.
Okay, you are correct.
Motion to approve Resolution 2022-14 as presented.
There you go. And a second, any further discussion? We'll vote. Woslinger.
Yes.
Mattson.
Yes.
Brenneman. Yep. Keel.
Yes.
Jas.
Yes.
O'Hara. Alright, 2022, Resolution 2022-15, transfer funds to the industrial sewer project. Information again is in your packet.
Motion to approve Resolution 2022-15, transfer funds to the industrial sewer project as presented.
I'll second.
Any discussion? If not, we'll vote. Keel.
Yes.
Jas.
Yes.
O'Hara.
Yes.
Woslinger.
Yes.
Mattson.
Yes.
Brenneman.
Yes.
Alright. 20, Resolution 2022-16, transfer funds for the wastewater treatment project. And again, this is to transfer the funds from the ARPA grant, is that correct?
Yes, so, when we first got our first payment of ARPA funding, we just set up a separate fund, because we didn't designate right away where it was going to go. We have since designated it's going to go to our wastewater treatment plant, so this will transfer those grant funds from that ARPA fund to the actual wastewater treatment project fund.
Motion to approve Resolution 2022-16 as presented.
I'll second.
Any discussion? If not, we'll vote. Keel.
Yes.
Jas.
Yes.
O'Hara.
Yes.
Brenneman.
Yep.
Mattson.
Yes.
Woslinger.
Yes.
Alright. Review approved billboard lease agreement between Golden West Telecommunications Inc. and the city of Hartford. Information's in your packet. This is, I've got to get it right, is this a west, no.
It'll be the west phase, so you see it going into Sioux Falls.
Into Sioux Falls.
Billboard number four.
That's right.
Just like last month, it's our standard lease agreement, no changes have been made to the agreement.
Make a motion to approve the Golden West rental billboard?
I'll second.
Any discussion? If not, we'll vote. Brenneman.
Yes.
Mattson.
Yes.
Woslinger.
Jas.
O'Hara.
Yes.
Jas. Keel.
Yes.
Alright. Already are past, fire chief and chamber, city engineer report.
Good evening, everyone, not too much since last meeting, distributed plat in Western Nose, adjacent to that big gated right away. Have not heard back on with punch lists for maps, wanting more Turtle Creek, Six and Munt, they actually have all of the utility installed, so water sewer and the subdrain have been installed, and now they're just working on roadway shaping, and getting curb bearings, also, we need to get the road paving, based on, when you last spoke to the contractor, they're looking to have it done first year of November. On the water tower, they're pretty much wrapped up with that, McGuire has, does a couple change orders and a, and a, we'll get to at the end, just for that interior coating that we talked about last time, the interior barrel of the stem of the tower, that painting doesn't sit on, so it's actually a little bit shaped later, just going to power wash that as opposed to sandblasting it, and then just get the recoat, do a primer coat and two outer coats. And then the second change order is just for the logo and the timeline extension with the set logo on the tower in the first half of next year. The water resource recovery facility, we are chugging along on the design of that, we're looking to have an internal set of 30% plans ready for the CM once they come on board here at the end of the month, so we're working on that, have that ready for them. As you are all aware, there was the county commission meeting this morning where we presented them on the regionalization, sounds like it went well, but there are more meetings the commission needed to move that forward and hopefully secure some funding on that. Also, as you all know, the CM proposals were received, interviewed, and we're looking to the committee to suggest their recommendation to council for CMAR selection for that project. On the Black and Red Trail, still no update, house is still listed, we have talked to our stormwater team about alternate options, just to see if we get to, if we get to crunch time where the timeline is not allowed for the, for design and army corps permitting, we could just go straight to an alternative and have that ready to go, so we can still utilize those funds by the end of next year. Storm shelter, we're compiling that to the CCOG, I believe John was working with Sophie today, and we're getting that sent off on the Highway 38, what are we, we're remembering internal set half ready for Craig, once he returns from his vacation, and also give him an updated cost estimate, cost estimate to meet for that project. Western Avenue, we've got the team assembled, we've started preliminary design, which is about 30% climax, so a good overview of layout rating of what's needed, and we'll also provide a cost estimate with that too at the end of Phase 1 of design, at the end of this year. Any questions from me on any other items?
On that storm shelter.
Yep.
When do you guys think you'll have that compiled and resubmitted?
I believe, I believe they submitted it today, I'll have to check that.
Oh, you think.
Yeah, yeah, that was our goal, Sophie loves Sophie.
I saw an email between John and Sophie, he sent the updated information to her today.
Yep, yep, sorry, that'll be sent this week.
The malls and females court to approve it.
So we should hear about a year. Hopefully not, yes, three or four months, hopefully.
There's no other questions, there's a couple items for you guys that I mentioned, change order two on the water tower project is for that interior blasting, that is a BEDEC of $10,000, since there is less intense and less work, so.
Okay, we'll handle these one at a time, so any council action on that first one?
Make a motion to approve change order number two for the water tower project.
Any discussion? If not, we'll vote. Brenneman. Yep. Mattson.
Yes.
Woslinger.
Yes.
Keel.
Yes.
Jas.
Yes.
O'Hara.
Yes.
Alright.
The second change order for that same project for the water tower is for the logo and extending the timeline for that, just due to how it worked out with the city finalizing their new logo, I just wasn't up to time up in the air with temperatures to get it painted this year, so McGuire's proposal through it next year with the completion date of June 1st. And the cost increase associated with that is $13,895, that is just due to the increase in effort required to go from the standard block letters, because what we're originally going to put on it, same Hartford, to the actual logo.
Has there been discussion with McGuire about getting a price for the school in case they wanted to put theirs on at the same time in the back?
I had a conversation with Christopher, he's getting me a.
Oh, not you.
Not, yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry, I couldn't remember who you talked with, but I knew that that was, okay.
Yep, I talked with him, and he's supposed to be getting a cost estimate.
Because if we can, if we can swing that, swing that with the school and figure out the financing, do it all, yeah, and hopefully, they'd give us a better deal if they come and do it both at once. They would go on the backside, faces toward the baldens, our logo will be this way facing toward town, wait, point the wrong direction.
Ours will be on the south side.
And we'll let them put the western approach and face toward the school, or toward the balden.
That's Amy's direction, like she's got it.
Amy, you got it down, don't you?
Nope, sure don't.
Okay. Alright.
I'd make a motion to approve change order number three.
I'll second.
Alright, any discussion?
That's a large stencil.
It is one, and they hand, that's painted, that's not a sticker or decal, that's painted.
I think it's painted, yeah.
Correct. Alright. Any more discussion? If not, we'll vote. O'Hara.
Yes.
Jas.
Keel.
Brenneman.
Yes.
Mattson.
Yes.
Woslinger.
Yes.
Alright, what do you got next, Michael?
The pay application number one for the water tower, that is essentially through substantial completion, all that's, all that stuff on that project is just 13, just finalizing, finishing out the items, and then we'll look next year. For the amount of $213,275.
What? We like the $10,000 stuff, looks better, we don't like the made ones.
2024 total, this is the first version contract. Motion approved, fair request number one as presented for $213,275.
Any discussion? If not, we'll vote. Woslinger.
Yes.
Mattson.
Yes.
Brenneman.
Yep.
Keel.
Yes.
Jas.
Yes.
O'Hara.
Next one I figured is payout four for the Six and Munt projects in the amount of $354,676.25.
We were doing real good until these last two.
I know, that is just for, for work completed to date, the paving on Phase 2, just Sixth Street, Three Munt Avenue, north of Sixth Street, we're going Genie and then the water along Sixth.
What was that total?
What was that?
126,73. So how, what are we, about three-fourths?
Yeah, just, just about three-fourths of the way.
The finish is 493.
Okay. So, okay.
Make a motion to approve fair request number four to sacrifice construction.
Any discussion? Not, we'll vote. Keel.
Yes.
Jas.
Yes.
O'Hara.
Yes.
Woslinger.
Yes.
Mattson.
Yes.
Brenneman.
Yes.
Alright.
Just a comment on that project, it must be going fairly well for residents, they're not down here.
Right.
So the communication.
There's a lot of concerns, and frankly, you have, I saw, well, he worked for First Street, so he can actually go out there, after everyone's already gone, and everyone's talking out on the street, and look at the states and go, oh, this is what's going to happen here, so it helps a lot to say, okay. It calms a lot.
They don't know how to read grades, right?
I don't. Because I told William, I was like, if I can't get my boat in here, we're going to have problems. I was like, go read that grade stake, as soon as I saw him out there.
Just do those.
By you will lower you there, right?
You don't. He said the same thing, well, if I can't back the fish, I'll say, here we're going to have problems too.
That's good.
We've been, it's been watched closely by a few and discussed a lot. I rely on William.
It's all lost discussion, I'm sure.
Or 16.
All right, the last one under your list there is review approved interview committee recommendation for the CMAR for the wastewater treatment facility. You want to, you want to, since you were on there, you and Jake, you want to?
Yeah, there's two applicants, so to speak, for that position, both came with great resumes. You know, if you look at the tally there, we have a little score chart, Rice Lake's experience, probably a thousand times more than PKG, but that's just because they've been around a long time, they've been doing it a lot longer.
Yeah.
Didn't speak to their qualifications necessarily. Both of them came highly recommended, I had some private talks with individuals in the industry as far as how they are to work with, as did Truce and Craig. In summary, you couldn't go wrong with either. So.
What's the biggest factor in your recommendation? What do you think?
For me, Rice Lake had their team here. Unfortunately for PKG, it was, it didn't.
I mean, it's in their project manager?
Yeah. And it was just the comfort level, and so really it came, not so much the statistics of it or the black and white of it, but just a gut feeling.
They also talked a lot about what happens after this thing is built. You know, when you have a brand new operator hired who's got to run a new facility, but no one here knows how to support them on, they talked a lot about their ability to support that person, how they're working with people for thirty years after they built their first water recovery facility, they're still working with people, so I liked that aspect a lot. They said, I'm the guy you call in ten years when something's going on, you know, and I felt really comfortable with that. I will say, even like this scorecard says, like, we gave them a hundred and the other one ninety or whatever it was, that's not to say that we think Rice Lake's perfect by any means. It just was like, hey, we got to differentiate here, we're giving these guys a ten and these guys a nine, and they were both high quality, and I'm not saying Rice Lake's perfect by any means, that was kind of how we differentiated to that, so.
All right. Thank you guys for sitting in and taking care of that, getting that boiled down, any action from the council?
Make a motion to approve Rice Lake construction group as a CMAR for that wastewater treatment facility.
I'll say. Any discussion? Very non, we'll vote. Keel.
Yes.
Jazz.
Yes.
O'Hara.
Yes.
Brenneman.
Yes.
Matson.
Yes.
Los Lager.
Yes.
All right. Anything else from the wonderful world of ISG?
That's all, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Karen, you're next up, I see we have your report, you always say that, your report's in the packet, that's all.
I do have something to add this time.
Okay.
First off, your attendance chart, I, you want to check that over, I wasn't sure who was all at the public meeting we held on the wastewater plant, so if I'm missing someone, please let me know, and then I will add tonight, of course, and update that, but yeah, I'll process payroll the first day of November, so you can see that in your accounts on November second. And then the other thing I wanted to touch on is our bank accounts. Currently, we have a savings account where the majority of our money sits, and then we have a checking account, and when I cut payroll or cut accounts payable checks, I move just what's needed into that checking, because that's where those checks come out of. Blair approached Teresa the other day about a new product they have out, an index money market account, and it has a better interest rate, and he, it's something that municipalities before didn't qualify for, but now we do. So he just wanted to make us aware of this and see if it would be something we would want to move at least some of our money over to, just to, you know, reap the value of that higher interest rate, so. Teresa and I kind of talked about it and looked at it, and both of us feel comfortable that we could move a million into that money market, get a little bit of extra interest income, and that would still leave enough funds in there, you know, because everything would still come into our savings, it's all set up ACH and stuff, so that would still leave us enough money to conduct business in the state, so.
Is there so many transactions in and out of that? Do you remember?
There is, and that is why we want to leave the savings the way it is, because I think it was six, six electronic transfers, and all our sales tax payments are electronic. Everything from the state is electronic.
Six per month?
Pardon, six per month. Six per month, yeah.
We have quite a few open, like you said, all our.
And every transfer I would do, because I do that online, would be considered an electronic, so that would be the reason why we wouldn't want to eliminate the savings altogether, because I think we, then we'd incur fees, or wouldn't even be able to do it probably, because we bypassed that limit, so. And the only really other requirement is that we keep at least average balance of fifty thousand daily balance, we would do that. Just be a way to make a little bit more money.
And the account is fluid, so I mean, if we need the funds, we can just draw them out, or if we're getting a buildup in savings and want to put more into, we can do that as well.
I was going to say, is the one million in the conservative park to see how it goes, or could we do more?
We could do more, I guess our feeling is, yeah, let's see how the gold, see how much we actually use as our savings, you know, as we're conservative.
Yo.
You know what I mean?
I feel.
Yeah. A little bit.
First time we've ever heard that.
Yeah. I want to even last weekend with Tom, oh, we can put a little more. But, you know, if we can look at that and then reassess it at the end of the year, like I said, we can always transfer more funds into it if we're getting a buildup again.
All right. I'll make a motion to approve next money market account. I'll say. Any more discussion? All right, not, we'll vote. Los Lager.
Yes.
Matson.
Yes.
Brenneman.
Yep.
Keel.
Yes.
Jazz.
Yes.
O'Hara.
Yes.
All right. See that, Karen, you can have stuff on there, we approve it, man.
It's easy.
Unbelievable.
Thanks for being open to ideas and bringing them up, it's good for our citizens, so.
It's great.
Yep. All right, we know Craig's gone, that was the first, Teresa, you got anything else to add to your report that you want to comment on?
No, I'm scared to.
It's an off night.
Or it killed me.
Yeah, nothing to, to really add to it, unless you have questions, Tom is still working with, he actually sent me one of the agreements today with the seniors, and he's working on the library, so my next meeting, we should have those agreements for you, because I'll give them then time to look it over as well, you know, we should have final draft to by our next meeting.
We got the title insurance ordered, so as soon as that gets here, we'll arrange for a closing, so.
Yeah. Still working on getting quotes for changing over the city logo, we got all the stationary ones, we'll get that ordered, I'm meeting with fast signs and sign aroma to go, we're basically all our signage out of walls and our trucks and our welcome signs and our new sign we're looking at for out there, so we're continuing to move forward with that, and I talked with Lori Girlcott at Girlcott Incan Thread, and she can, if I pick out an item, whether it be a polo or a pullover or whatnot, she can send me a picture of what that would look like in color, what the logo would look on it, so maybe I'll have some pictures for you guys to look at different things at the next meeting to see what you prefer. So hopefully I have that by the next meeting for you as well, and most of the week I will finish up all FEMA reports, because those are due by Friday, and I've been going back and forth a lot with the Galton FEMA, that's I think I got everything sent in, oh, I need this, I think there's a, there's a lot of reports, so should have that all finished up by this week.
I'll throw this in under your report, the guys did a nice job of getting all the trees cleaned up.
Oh, yeah.
Man, that looks good down there, I happened to drop off some stuff, and Brian was there, he said that was his last day Saturday.
Yes.
So we're unmanned now the rest of the season.
Actually, we have Russ Loswold, who is, kind of fills in for us, Brian, his last day was Saturday, he has to have eye surgery, so he isn't able to continue on. Got a hold of Russ, like I said, he's kind of our part-time filling in, and he said he should be able to cover all until it closes, you know, after Thanksgiving. If there would happen to be a day he couldn't do it, we'll have our guys go out there and open and shut it, so we can have it manned pretty well to the end of the season.
We were there five minutes, and I bet there was five vehicles in there Saturday morning. I mean, we were there five minutes, and I bet there were five trucks and less in there unloading, it's crazy.
Yep.
So. All right, anything else, Teresa?
No.
If not, we'll move old business, we put on their update, we've talked a little bit about the regionalization. I thought the presentation this morning went good, we just they had all this stuff on their agenda, and we got slammed to the back end of their agenda, we were there almost four hours, and I really, Jesse sent out a note this afternoon, I believe we're going to try to take a step two and get the mayors and a few of the county commissioners and see if we can set up some meetings and just talk with them, you know, three on one or three on two or whatever we can get it to arrange, to get them a little more, you know, touch. We've mentioned Gerald Benega was at our last HADF meeting, Gerald did a nice job, he pitched us, he pitched us about as hard as he could, so that's very much appreciated. So.
So what's the, what's the timeline, or what are we going to ask them to do, or?
Well, they're going to, they're going to think about it, is what, we really didn't, we gave them a figure, so they know what we're looking for. And when they asked, is that exactly what you're looking for, we kind of said, well, yeah, that's kind of what we're looking for, and so they know what we're after, it'll be interesting to see what they they basically right away said, we don't have any money, which is what we figured they were going to tell us, so I think we're going to have to work a little harder just to see what we can, so. Everyone, as we've said, that we've presented our proposal to on regionalization thinks it's the best thing for us to do, but they, you know, they don't understand that crooks or a colt in their alliance can't, just can't come up with that kind of money, and they can't surcharge their citizens enough to make it fly, so it's going to be a, it's going to be a slog, but I thought Butch's comment today was really good, when he said, we're, I mean, crooks is going to be at a point not too long down the road, so that's why he's been pushing so hard. They are going to be at a point, so it'd be nice to see if we could figure that out.
I think it's important to make sure our citizens and all, it doesn't have any barrier on our.
Nothing, right, correct.
And that was brought up during the meeting, we, we are for moving forward with our plan.
Right.
Regardless of this, we, you know, we want to work with the other communities, though, and help.
Yeah, we made sure that, I mean, they know, our plan is set, we're doing this deal one way or another, just that.
You look at the opportunity to capture some water farms and other.
Correct.
It's a touchline economic, that's a being changer on the economic development.
Boy, from Western, for Western Minnehaw County, it could be the biggest thing that, I mean, this could really be a huge thing, would just jumpstart us.
If you look at what the sewer line extension did to East Sioux Falls.
Yeah.
For Red Farm, this was Litterman's Parkway East.
Yeah, what the development's been.
Huge.
Oh, yeah, huge, anyway, so that was good, and we think we get into the weeds sometimes in conversations, oh my.
Climate issues worse.
They were in the weeds, I'll just say.
They do.
And just as a reminder to our, an update to, I know that we mentioned Colton and Crooks and Lines, but Humboldt was also represented, all those smaller communities, they all showed up for it, so I give them high praise for being there.
Boy, and I have to make sure I mention that Jesse, when he was introducing everybody, who's the only one he forgot?
I'm going to talk to a lot of that.
But it wasn't about us.
It was not about us, which is true. That's what's going to, I'll guarantee you that'll be advanced, anyway, all right, we'll move on to new business, we got one item under new business we need to discuss, which is, we have an outstanding check, and to get that cleared off, we need a motion or action by the council to clear that check off our books.
Motion to approve removal of outstanding check from the city books.
Second. Any discussion? If not, we'll vote. Jazz.
Yes.
O'Hara.
Yes.
Keel.
Yes.
Matson.
Yes.
Brenneman.
Yes.
Los Lager.
Yes.
All right, do we have anything for exec, since we got Tom here?
Probably.
Yes. So motion to go into exec. All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Benjamin.
Call for a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.